Welcome everybody to the Rous County Council Meeting or extraordinary meeting of the twenty first of July twenty twenty one. In accordance with section two, three, six of the local government regulations two thousand and five, attendees at today's council meeting are advised that this meeting is being livestreamed. All speakers should refrain from making any defamatory comments or releasing personal information about another individual without their consent. Council accepts no liability for damage that may result from defamatory comments made by persons attending meetings. All liability rests with the individual who made the comments. This meeting must not be recorded by others without the prior written consent of council in accordance with council's code of meeting practice. All right, that's the opening of meeting, item two, acknowledgement of country. Council would like to show its respect and acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land, of elders past and present on which this meeting takes place. Three, apologies and leave of absence, where all councillors are present. Are there any disclosures of interest? Nil disclosures of interest. All right, item five, general manager report, Rous Regional Water Supply, draft revised integrated water cycle management strategy adoption, future water project twenty sixty. Councillor Cook.
Thank you Chair, I'm moving a separate motion that's in the business report, it's on my way to put it up please.
Okay. The motion is being circulated.
Oh, thank you.
The motion is now appearing on the screen. Do I have a seconded?
No, that's a yes Chair.
Oh, hang on, I thought it was, we're up a little bit, once it's on the screen.
I have to take it.
So who is that? Councillor Corey? All right, we have a motion that's been moved and seconded, we're just getting it on the screen, hoping it's on the screen, and there we go. All right, Councillor Cook.
Thank you Chair, look here we are again, councillor for the fourth line.
I've just got a question, do I may adopt and confirm the revised integrated water cycle management strategy after the extraordinary meeting on seventeenth of March twenty twenty one? Not actually listed in there what it is.
That is the IWCM as it had been.
As exhibited.
As exhibited, right, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Cook.
Councillors, we've just gone through another lengthy exhibition of our revised IWCM, I said and on public record, I listened to the community. So I want to acknowledge the many people who took the time to review the documentation, came to the public information session, wrote formal submissions to us, which I have read, I've listened to many professionals, they've given us their insights into this field in this group. But I also want to acknowledge the people who came to the market, and they signed the petitions, and they were told called for all options to be on the table. However, the petition's actually called all groundwater decel and recycled water to be scrapped, adoption for permanent water supply. That would leave by default the dam as the only possible option for investigation as a long time permanent water source. Councillors, I believe to bring the dam back into the IWCM for investigations, right back to the very beginning. It ignores the evidence that's been presented to us and debated in this chamber over the last nine months, and nowhere in any of the literature, as I said to Mr Trevan, are available to the public at the petition sites, was there any reference as to why we took the dam out of the IWCM? We took the dam out of the strategy because we already had reports demonstrating the significant heritage loss that would occur to the remnant rainforest located in the Shannon Gorge. We took it out because of the impact of the dam, or native fauna in the area, including koalas whose genetic makeup is vastly different from that of other koalas in this region. We listen to traditional custodians of the lands whose ancestors are buried in that valley, who did not want their cultural heritage flooded, and may have spoken to us again today. We revere the connection to the land that those traditional custodians have, we've acknowledged that in every meeting here at Rous, we've acknowledged that during my dot make, this theme was seal the country. Was that respected for that? Or do we really need it? To bring the dam back into contention lies in the face of all the climate predictions showing that rainfall independent, rainfall dependent water storage will be less viable in future periods, where they estimate there will be lower rainfall and lower surface runoff. It ignored the New South Wales Productivity Commission advice that all water authorities should develop a suite of non rainfall dependent options to ensure consistent supply in times of lower rainfall. The Product Productivity Commission no longer views dams as a viable economic option, in many cases they're becoming a cost burden to their communities. Building a dam will incur hundreds of millions of dollars upfront for the construction, with a massive expense to our community. All the other options would be constructed over a period of thirty odd years, spreading the cost across the decades. We know this, we've heard these arguments many, many times. Today I also want to acknowledge the letter from NTS Corp, they raised a number of issues that Rous must address, that's noted in this motion. In recognition of the request by NTS Corp that no decision be made on the dam project or the lands associated with the project area, I've included point six in this motion to defer any consideration of disposal of the lands or sale of the lands that Rous own until at least after the next scheduled IWCM division. I'm hoping this point will alleviate the concerns that some of you have had, that a decision to dispose of the lands was premature. It also gives time for many full consultations with the traditional owners about the lands and the possible future use for them. I cannot support bringing the dam back into consideration today, Councillors, I ask you to support this motion.
Thank you, Councillor Cook. I have a speaker against. And I have a speaker for.
Oh, thank you guys.
Councillor Cadwalader.
Well now, Councillor Cook, this surprises me, that with the consultation period of ten thousand two hundred and eight people saying that they want the Dunoon Dam back as part of the future water strategy, just ignore that and give it no recognition or respect it deserves, is really quite alarming. If we want to go back to the very beginning, let's go back to federal, and the dam was stopped down there thirty years ago, and obviously that was, that was a terrific site, because of the geotech of the site, but that was scrapped. So here we are now, we are at twenty twenty four is the magic number, when we know that demand is going to outstrip supply. And that's, that's a worry, we're twelve months behind because of the decision that was taken back in December twenty, and none the least of which this latest public consultation has cost the community well over two hundred thousand dollars and counting, because of the decision that five people took for a hundred and ten thousand people last December. Now that, I mean, that exhibition period, originally the six weeks, people asked for extra time, we gave them extra time, we gave another four weeks, ten weeks exhibition period to get twelve hundred and ninety eight responses to the exhibition. And here we are now, with only an eight week exhibition period, and we get the astounding results that we've got now. It really does speak volumes. There were people out there that just didn't know what, what was going on, and it took a manate effort from volunteers, from people to actually let others know what was going on. People were calling me, saying where do I sign the petition? I want to be part of this, I want my voice heard, I don't do online things. And that was the common theme that was coming through. So people did want to have skin in the game in this, it is important to them, and not just to them, but to future generations, for their children and their grandchildren, a lot of elderly folk I heard from. And I believe that's, that's the majority that I'm representing here today, those that haven't been able to have their voice heard. So it really doesn't fit well with me just to ignore all those people that have come forward, that have taken their time. And I really want to thank all the people that gave deputations here today, to put the time and effort in, to have their voices heard, represent their communities and their groups. But ten thousand two hundred and eight people, in their opinion, was that the dam should be part of a future water strategy going forward, and that's right. The petitions did not support aquifer water as a permanent water source, let's not forget as a permanent water source. Decellination was a permanent water source, or toilet to tap water is a permanent water source. They said they did support the Dunoon Dam being investigated, so that an informed decision could be made as to its viability or not. We're talking about eighty three, eighty five percent of respondents here, just to ignore that is wrong on so many levels. Here we have a situation that defies all the investigations over the last twenty five years, because the dam was found as the best way forward to meet in the future water supply demands, after seven million dollars has been spent. What about the gas abatement strategy? That gets thrown out the window because of the voluminous amounts of energy with accessing, transporting and treating groundwater, wastewater and seawater. It beggars the least that those who's breathing environmentally conscious would support such a project with such a high carbon footprint. Not to mention the degradation of the Tiagra Nature Reserve. The proposed West Byron Decellination Dam is designed to have its inlet and waste outlet piped into the Cape Byron Marine Park. Will the Byron Tiagra community really support that? I mean, the aquifers, some of them are just two metres under the environmentally sensitive nature reserves, seriously affecting the local community, the nature reserves and the koala population in the area. Seriously, you know, this is what you're voting for today if you support this notice of motion here. In order for the geotech and biodiversity studies to be done at the Dunoon Dam, it's got to be in the future water plan, it's got to be there. You can't go ahead and do the studies on private land if it's not in the strategy. That means the studies will not be done, they'll not be completed. Under the original draft.
We've gone over, we've gone over five minutes, I did mean to remind everybody that we.
I'll wrap it up, Chair, I've just got one more.
I'm happy to give you a couple of minutes because I didn't give you the warning at the start, so my apologies for that, but in order to, in some order to the proceedings, we'll try and.
Okay.
Five minutes limit, but please, you might apologize.
Dr Khan did say that all new water supplies are hard, clearly it isn't a simple solution in this case. How true is that? It's not a simple solution in this case. I've supported aquifer water as an interim measure until the dam was built, not as a permanent water source. And under the original draft future water plan twenty sixty, there were two key points, groundwater to secure the short to medium term water supply, surface water to secure the long term water supply being the Dunoon Dam proposal. So what we're talking about here is, we're talking about thirteen thousand seven hundred and eighty one responses that are being ignored if you support what's on the table at the moment as a, as an option going forward today. That to me doesn't fit well, and I'm sure it won't fit well with anyone else. And I would say, it's time, it's time that the state government intervened in this and took over the decision, because by twenty twenty four, we're going to be in a serious situation.
Councillor Corey is seconded?
I take my mask off to speak because it's probably hard for the people at home. Councillors, thank you, Councillor Cadwalader, the state government has intervened in this because they've actually developed the draft New South Wales Water Strategy, and that is in fact what this strategy reflects in what, in delivering the guidelines for the Rous County Council area. I note also that the product convention is, the exhibition is mentioned by Councillor Cook, also recommends against dams. We don't, I think the problem with this is there's a lot of fear, and I think a lot of the respondents to the petition are afraid that we will end up in a drought like we had before and nothing, there will be nothing. And I understand that, and you know, we were all affected, some more than others, fortunately in Byron, not as much as other parts of the county council area. But if we respond from a position of fear and just do the quick fix, and I know that, I think it was Mr Khan or one of the other presentations that have said, this dam is not the silver bullet, we want a silver bullet for a new water supply, but that isn't, this is not the answer, we need a secure and resilient water supply, and you know, someone referred to, you know, the mantra of the subliminal, the subliminal things about rainfall independent supplies, that is so important that they are rainfall independent, because we are going into a time, and increasingly we'll see it, where rainforests can burn, never has occurred before, all the rainforest ecologists have said, they can, you know, they can look through the geological record, there has been no rainfall, no fires in those Gondwana forests. If you consider that, and then you consider, well, we're dealing with a situation where we will likely have flat dams over brimming and dams going down, then anything that is dependent on rainfall cannot be the focus of this. And if we're looking simply at the triple bottom line aspects of this dam, you know, the economics of it, I don't believe stacks up with, you know, from my understanding of it, speaking to people who are economists, saying why would you spend this enormous amount of money right now when you can spend smaller amounts and bring other things online? I think, I actually cannot say strongly enough how, if we are meant to act for our first peoples, the absence of respect that would be shown by putting a dam into somewhere where they have indigenous heritage, they have family members buried. Imagine if we just went along to, I don't know, the cave paintings in France, the famous ones in Spain, and just said, look, we need a dam here, let's just whack it in. So that is the, you know, there was, in Australia, you know, we, we've had, you know, mining companies just destroy our cultural heritage, where in other, other places, it's revered, we keep it, we protect it, we embrace it and hope, you know, there's better understanding of knowledge. So, you know, healing country, which was the theme of NATO, is utterly fundamental to what we're doing here, and a dam is not healing country. If we look at the, you know, the huge excess water capacity that we would likely have in Dunoon at the time of, you know, if it were built, most of the time we would never use it. However, if we had the cheaper and more viable alternatives and the greater efficiencies, and I haven't even got started on that, then those things are what we should be focusing on, rather than putting all our eggs in the Dunoon basket, have an egg in several baskets and be working on those. The, it's sort of disservice to the people who put in, put in submissions this time around. I have to say though, admittedly acknowledging there was a petition, the actual number of people who contacted me, and I don't know about the other councillors, I actually didn't get any in support of the dam, they were all against the dam, so everybody had my email address, so I'm just wondering whether the petition actually reflects who's out there, or if the petition reflects a view that is perhaps not reflecting the complexity, as Mr Trevan said, of this issue, because it is complex, and if you actually had a conversation dealing with all the things that Councillor Cook is raising here, and the original IWMC put forward, that I think people would be better understanding and less fearful. Lastly, I don't believe in any way we've actually done the work about finding alternate ways of managing water. The demand management side, although is maybe a small portion, is still a portion that we need to consider. In Byron, we have an excess water problem most of the time, we have a sewage treatment plant that pumps out, you know, roughly twelve mega litres a day, I think it is at the moment, we can't get rid of it. So you're saying, well, well, this is just plain stupid, there must be a way to do that. So if we spent money on purple pipes that took it to somewhere else, and again, it's a question of money, then, you know, that is a massive amount of water that could be redeployed, and I know that some.
Councillor Craig, I've just got a.
Time to wind up?
See the wind up.
Yeah, for sure. So in that context, there is funding for water projects, and in fact, councillor, sorry, Dr Khan, who spoke earlier, he's on the National Water Grid Advisory, that actually gives Commonwealth funding for water projects, and who recommends against dams, maybe if the Commonwealth has a body that's looking at water projects and has funding, maybe that's where we go. But spending that kind of money on, on a dam that will only work some of the time is really not the answer, and I cannot support it, and I am a rate payer and I also have children, so I, I'm doing this for them as well. Move an amendment, Chair? The, I've actually defeated that.
So you have an amendment?
Yes.
Or is it a foreshadowed motion?
Have a look at it, see, you'd have to work it.
You've got to tell me.
Well, you just lie and get that look at it, then.
It's different.
It's a nice one, though, it's foreshadowed. Quite different. Motion as printed, that's probably.
It's a foreshadowed versus.
Direct contradiction.
Is it a comparison?
Yes.
Is it, your motion as printed? Yes, yes, it's a motion as printed in the business paper.
No, it's not.
No?
Yes.
I'm passing forward in the business paper.
Although there's lots of similar words, the intent and the outcome is vastly different.
Yeah.
Um.
One before makes it a foreshadowed.
I think, I think it's fundamentally different to the motion.
It's fundamentally different.
Amending, oh, well, yeah, sorry, amending the.
Motion. No, it's fundamentally different, you're talking about introducing things.
Must be a direct negation of the original motion.
Yeah.
It is, it's a complete cultural heritage, that's the message, and we're saying no to it.
Not direct, it's the same thing, but it's amending some of the content. Yeah, if I, I would have to accept that it could be moved as an amendment.
No.
Um, so it's moved, Councillor Cadwalader seconded, is there a seconded?
You're saying that's an amendment, okay.
I think, I think it has to be accepted as an amendment.
And you identify the difference, there's six, seven, eight are all different, and four.
Four is fundamentally different.
Fundamentally different.
It's not a direct negation, can't rule it that for direct negation, so, an amendment has been moved, Councillor Cadwalader.
Thank you Chair. Chair, I'd just like to say to the council here, this issue is critically important to securing our future water for our region, it can't be taken lightly, and the reasons that were given to access back in December twenty, the amount of expense that's been incurred since, to me, is totally and absolutely irresponsible for this to have happened, and I have to appeal to you to get this back on track, to do the right thing by our community. I've said most of what needs to be said previously, but seriously, we really do need to do this. If we go back to thirty years ago when this was first moved, it needed to happen back then, and it's been all this time, but what's happened during that time, during the time, there's been so many measures put in place with demand management, people are using less water than they've ever used, people are being educated as to it, but you can only ask them to use so much water, you can only ask them to cut back so much, and I believe people are doing that. There's such an awareness now of what a precious commodity water is, and how much it means that, and I do believe that people are doing the right thing, and tanks are playing a part in that as well. So during that period of time, there's been, which has been a quite a lengthy period of time till we got to this stage, now we need to do, we need to keep this project on track, and why do we need to keep it on track? On track because for the greater good of our community, but in the public interest. And we can't just dismiss what the people are saying. The volunteers that went out and knocked on doors and, and did what they could to just alert people to the fact that this is, this is what's happening, and for people to come out and just want their voice heard, that speaks volumes, and it shouldn't be ignored, and, and we should be able to do these studies moving forward, all the studies that are required so you can make an informed decision, and we can't do that unless the dam is in, in the strategy, that's what needs to happen. So we can't just dismiss this out of hand like this, it's something that just should not happen. And as, as we heard today from the engineer, Mr Khan, we heard that all of these things, nothing's simple, all of these things have an impact, but we, we tend to work through them, if there's, if something we need, if something as basic, as fundamental as water, there's some, there's, there's ways of working through the issues, but if you don't have the information, how can you work through the issues if they come up? There's just, you can't just go and make a blase statement, I take the dam out, which is what happened last December, you just can't do that. It has been done, but how can five people do that for a hundred and ten thousand people? It just doesn't seem like that is the right thing to do, and it isn't. Let's be clear about that, it isn't. It was a unanimous vote when we put the, put it on exhibition last time, and councillor said that they listened to the community, they listened to the community, they passed their vote on less than one percent of the population, twelve hundred and ninety eight people responded. Now we get over thirteen thousand responses, and they're not listening to the community. How does that work? I really, really question how that works and what the motivation is. So I would ask you to please support this amendment and vote to keep the dam on track, keep it on track, don't plunder the aquifers, even in that, that last submission, that last exhibition period, fifty six percent of those twelve hundred and ninety eight people that responded to that exhibition said, don't touch the aquifers, yet that's front and centre moving forward on this, on this new strategy, front and centre. How's that listening to the community? It's not, it's clearly not listening to the community. So, I mean, it's likened to fracking, I think, going into the aquifers like that, that's likened to fracking, it's as simple as that. I mean, okay, you do whatever it takes to get to where you need to go, but you've got to, you can't pick a goal without a goalpost, and you do need to get there, so you may have to use some groundwater in order to, to, as an interim solution until a dam was built, but not as a permanent solution, you cannot rely on groundwater, decellination and toilet to tap, which is not even legislated. Okay, thank you Chair, I'll leave it there.
Speaker against, councillor.
I'll speak against, thank you. I'll speak against this, and like Councillor Cook said at the beginning, here we are again, talking. So you may have to use some groundwater in order to, to, as an interim solution until a dam was built. But not as a permanent solution. You cannot rely on groundwater, these salinations and toilets, toilet to tap, which is not even legislated. Okay, thank you, Chair, I'll, I'll leave it there.
Speaker again, councillor.
I'll speak again, thank you. Um, I'll speak against this. And like councillor Cook said at the beginning, here we are again, talking about future water strategy. Um, some, a previous chair of Ralph's and other councils said it's been twenty-five years that this debate has gone on and we heard that from the Wijibul Wibul custodians earlier. Twenty-five years of debate, scientific opinion, technical organisations and public consultation. But my involvement's only been since two thousand and eight, when the Ralph's administration wanted to build the Dunoon Dam. And the community said, what are the other options? And then we went into a project reference group process of technical experts delivering, um, papers and decision was made over two years. So in two thousand and eleven, a decision was made that we prioritised demand management, groundwater and recycled water. In two thousand and fourteen, that decision was confirmed. In two thousand and twenty, that decision was confirmed. And again, today, we are addressing the same matter. Um, so it's pretty clear that the industry experts and the state government are saying that we need a diversity of supply that is independent from rainfall. And that's what will give us water security, which we're all concerned about. Community consultation, well, I have to say it's not really clear. We've spent eighteen weeks doing community consultation over last year and this year. Um, online applications for both times, four hundred, five hundred. Written applications, nine hundred, eighteen hundred. Of those eighteen hundred this year, sixteen hundred of them were pro forma. But of the two hundred unique written applications, um, seventy-five percent of them were opposed to a dam. Petitions, well, if you look at the petitions, there were thirteen hundred each time. So you're getting a seventy-five, twenty-five split in the decision making there. That brings us to the push petition, the push petition of ten thousand people that responded. So let's talk about that. What did those people want? They wanted further technical studies to see if the Dunoon Dam was viable. Well, we've spent millions of dollars and decades looking at whether the Dunoon Dam is viable. And going with this, um, motion amendment here would, um, interfere with our dotted budget and our scheduled projects. And I'd just say that we've done the analysis. The analysis has been done again and again and the Dunoon Dam fails every time. It is not viable for four reasons that is not viable. One of them is to do with a significant cultural heritage. And you heard again from the Wijibul Wibul, traditional custodians, about how unacceptable that dam and that location is to them. We've heard about the environmental destruction of a rare perched rainforest and the koalas and platypus that live in that area. We've heard about the economics and the huge upfront cost to current users of building what could be a stranded asset that will, won't be used for many, many years, decades. And we know the dam projects are blowing out by a hundred and fifty percent or more around the country. And the fourth reason is because we want water security. And we know this means we need diverse sources. It's really important to us all. And the strategy that we've adopted, and again and again, has been adopted since I've been here in two thousand and eight, was that we need incremental diverse sources that we can bring online next to the populations that need them. So councillors, we need to focus on demand management, which has always been at the top of the agenda and which we have whittled away the budget for every year since and we don't take it seriously enough. The second thing we need to focus on is, um, was mentioned by one of the submissions, is the question of levels of service. Our secure yield and all of the figures around how much water we need before we run out are based on providing ninety percent of normal demand during the worst drought on record. And I think our community is much more able to cope with water restrictions than that secure yield service, um, expects. And we need to have that conversation. And we also need to have a really important conversation with our community about water use. How do we use it? We know most household use is used in the toilet and the shower. Less than two percent of household uses will use for drinking and cooking, less than two percent. And this is not a conversation that we've had with our community, really. We need to be really clear about how we use water. And that's why I think we should focus on purified recycled water because it's fit for purpose. It's good for flushing toilets and washing socks, which is what we use water for. It is a supply that doesn't run out in times of drought and, and it's the future.
Okay, more time. I've just got to signal that with five minutes. See, I think that councillor Humphrey.
Thanks very much. And, um, Richard was certainly right when he said it's a complex issue and my notes, I'm going to struggle, but I'm going, going to give it my best shot. Um, in supporting the dam, I've always supported all the other options. I mean, that's why we've got Paradenia out there with the recycled water. Always support the D-Sub. Don't particularly care for it at near the marine park, but if it's, if it will supply the water that's, um, independent of the climate, well, then I support it. Um, I've, and, um, total reuse, certainly, but it's not legislated. So it's really hard to go hard on something that hasn't been legislated. So I support the Dunoon Dam and the other options that, that, um, Ralph's has always had on the table. Um, I would like to introduce something and I, and I'm happy to, I really want to reintroduce it. I spoke, I think in February on it, but it's, it's, this is real now. This is no time like today after the response we've had from the public submissions. Eighty-five percent of the people are expecting that Ralph's will at least finish the investigation of the dam. The, um, the NC, the, uh, the court is also, was it the NCS Court Limited? They also want us to complete the investigations. So the one, what I'd like to introduce because of the eighty-five percent is that, that reporting here. Now, we all received this, all, all options on the table and I did talk about this, as I said. If you go to page forty-seven, why this is really relevant today is because it, we're in a similar situation that they faced when they did their Cotter Dam. The community worked together, which we need to be doing right now, to achieve the water supply needed to deal with their frequent, longer and more severe droughts without having to, to endure regular high level water restrictions for extended periods. So I'm going to just go to it. It's, um, all about working with the community, coming together. So it was about the Cotter Dam was completed in two thousand and thirteen and built in two thousand and sixteen, so recently. It was the enlargement of the dam involving building a new dam downstream of the existing Cotter Dam for the consumption of seventy-six gigalitres. Aboriginal people have lived in and managed the copper lands and waters for more than twenty-five thousand years. And there is extensive archaeological evidence of Aboriginal artefacts. Rock shelters, oka quarries and ceremonial sites scattered throughout the catchment. A comprehensive heritage programme ensured that history was recorded for present and future generations. During construction, sensitive areas were identified and fenced off for protection. Approximately four thousand artefacts were recovered from the land to be inundated and returned to country with a ceremony with the First Nations people. It goes on to say that the protection of the endangered quarry perch was considered to be the project's greatest environmental achievement. So it can be done, building the world's first freshwater rock reef, a seven kilometre weaving wall of giant boulders carefully placed one by one into position to create a safe environment for local species. Through optimised design, material choices and the project achieved a significant reduction in lifestyle and environmental impact, reducing carbon emissions by twenty-three percent. That's the community working together and that's, that's what I feel we need to do. I mean, the general manager, I brought along, um, I also found fascinating, we, this was at our last, I think it was our last meeting, the, um, the one about the tourism dollars to Rocky Creek Dam, the value to the community. Is that, is that up open to the, to the community yet?
Yep, that's on our website now.
I would urge, um, those who are the highest supportive of the dam and particularly those who aren't. The research was commissioned by Ralph's Council and conducted by Southern Cross Uni. And the study itself is a response to, uh, Rich, uh, Council's interest in better recognising the value of assets. And in this case, it was Rocky Creek Dam, its ecosystem services. The philosophy is about the value of, of nature to the community. Um, the study implements the trouble cost methodology. And in this particular case, eighty-three percent of the people who go to Rocky Creek Dam live within a hundred kilometre radius of Rocky Creek Dam. Um, they're saying that Rocky, this value is one point six million dollars in per annum into the community. What I particularly found noteworthy is that it says, despite being unnatural, over time, water supply dams acquire natural amenities, which provide services beyond their primary purpose. These amenities are not dissimilar to those found on nature reserves and include biodiversity conservation, erosion control and water purification.
Um, just five minutes, councillor, if I could up here to wind up.
Uh, thank you. I just did want to bring the all options on the table, the case of the Cotter Dam being similar, work together with our community and this, the, um, value of Rocky Creek, a dam. And we absolutely, for the integrity of the organisation, we need to listen to the eighty-five percent of the people who want the investigation for the dam to continue. Thank you.
Um, speaker against the amendment, councillor Cameron.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, thank you, everybody. And I do want to emphasise that I, uh, have considered all the submissions. I want to make that absolutely clear to our presenters this morning. And anyone else, uh, out there in the community who thinks that we don't do, uh, our job properly and thoroughly ourselves before we make these decisions. All those contributions, I have to say, have been incredibly useful. And, uh, Mr Javan's submission today is quite useful as well because he has noted, and I agree with him completely, that after all this debate and all this consultation, that the issues have really narrowed down to a couple of key issues. We don't need to go into great amount of detail. The two key issues that we face are the costs of the dam versus water security for our community. I've heard it all through the, uh, the speeches here today, constantly talking about costs, constantly talking about money, but not so much about the water security. Water security is, is the paramount consideration, not the cost. Counting pennies is of little value without water security. Doesn't get us anywhere. On the security issue, we've really got to take the information that we have regarding projections for climate change seriously. A second dam on a, on a catchment, on the same catchment, where we expect rainfall to decrease by around twenty-two percent over the next forty years for life of the project. That's not water security. As councillor Cook and others have, uh, alluded to, it's actually a, a great deal of overcapitalisation in the early years. It locks up an enormous amount of capital, which actually reduces our flexibility and our ability to, to, uh, to deal with other issues as they come up. It'll be locked up. And that's all locked up for an expected benefit many years away. A benefit that may, in all likelihood, if climate change continues along its present course, will not be delivered. It's not the money. The truth is that a little bit of us dies each time we imagine that these natural and human resources are not the key to long-term sustainability and resilience. Actually based on diversified sources, once settled on, will open up many new opportunities as well. As councillor Currie has noted, in Byron, we actually have an excess of water that's currently flowing out to sea, raiding the Belonging catchment on the way. We've got trees dying there because there's too much water in there. There's an opportunity for us, in Byron, to be part of a longer term solution to reuse this result. And that's currently outside this strategy. But once we settle on this strategy, I can see that our local governments, all our constituent councils will be wanting to come in on this too and they'll be wanting to be part of the pollution. That will only add to security. It'll only increase the diversification and the decentralize, decentralisation of our sources. I just finally, I would like to acknowledge staff, uh, input into all this. You know, the, we are well served. We have had an incredible amount of information put before us. And I am quite confident that, um, once we make this decision, our staff will be a key part of the delivery of this strategy going forward. In the twenty-first century, it won't be the dam builders that'll be remembered. It'll be those that see the way forward, who are prepared to pioneer and lead their community towards better solutions. I'd also like to acknowledge the Wijibul Wibul people and the community. Your commitment and engagement has been powerful and will prove to be a great resource on our water security journey. And maybe just finally, uh, councillor Cadwallader, a note of hope. Yeah, I was around for the federal dam, I remember that. It was in my neighbourhood. Valley just, just over the way was going to be flooded by that. But let's remember this, deciding not to go ahead with that dam was the catalyst to reduce water demand in our region by over half. So let this decision today be a catalyst towards a better, more resilient and sustainable security future. Thank you, councillors. I hope that today we will make that right decision.
Before the amendment? Yeah, I will and I'll give notice. I've got a foreshadowed amendment, um. Foreshadowed amendment?
Foreshadowed and amended.
Oh, another amendment, okay. Haven't started yet, they don't start that clock. Okay, look, this amendment is not about building the Dunoon Dam. It's about bringing it back so the investigations can be done in line with the other options that councillor Humphreys, Cadwallader and, and I have always supported in the past. So councillors, I'm not going to speak about the kinds of various water sources. That debate has had, on many occasions, and the current revised I WCM strategy has been out in public consultation and has received what I believe to be one of the largest responses in our region. And I'll refer to some pages on that, you go one eighty-nine, one ninety-two and one ninety-three. So one eighty-nine, there was one thousand eight hundred and forty-nine written submissions, one thousand one hundred and sixty-eight, um, against the strategy. And, um, which breaks down to, over on page one ninety-two, there was, um, one hundred and eighty-one in support of it and one thousand one hundred and sixty-eight, um, against. And they supported the Noon Dam. The next one was not one hundred and ninety-nine and two hundred. We will see that, um, it was eleven thousand three hundred and eighteen petitions, ten thousand two hundred and eight were in support of the Noon Dam and one thousand one hundred. Councillors, that equates to a couple of the bigger councils. Um, so in Lismore, four thousand people supported the investigations in the Noon Dam. Four hundred were against. Ballina, three thousand in support of the Noon Dam, three hundred against. So, um, I think the community has had a, um, a fair say on that and understand what's going on. At the December, at the December meeting where the Noon Dam was removed from the I WCM, councillor Ekin opened the debate with these words, and they are all on tape, so they're not, I've gone one for one. The resolution is about noting the overwhelming numbers of submissions against the Dunoon Dam. Overwhelming numbers. There was thirteen hundred to fourteen hundred in the whole thing. Councillor Cook said during the debate, we need to listen to those community submissions. Whether or not they are a true representation of our entire community or not, they, they were, the submissions were received and we have to take into consideration. Closing, councillor, councillor Ekin said, this is our opportunity to lead in the field with so many submissions, so many and overwhelming, one tenth of what we've just received. At the March extraordinary meeting, when we resolved to put the current I WCM on public consultation and what we are debating now, councillor Cook stated, we have to pay attention to the number of submissions. Now, people might say that there is a noisy minority, but they were the people who got on their, off their butt and actually addressed the issues and put in submissions to it. We have and must pay attention to it and this is what we did at our resolution in December. We must pay attention to that. Then later, I think we can trust our community. If our community comes back overwhelmingly saying, hey, guys, we think you got it wrong, please have a look at the Noon Dam, then that is up to all of us to have a look at the Noon Dam as a proposal in response to all those submissions because that. as a proposal in response to all those submissions, because that is what we must do. We must respond to our community. Well, councillor Cook, here is your opportunity. I really can't believe how councillor Cook earlier twisted and manipulated the response from our community consultation to serve our agenda.
Councillor Musto, can I just say, I think it's reasonable for a councillor to find, councillor to find that statement offensive. I would ask you to withdraw that. We don't need that, we don't need that kind of.
I will not withdraw that because I don't believe I'm out of order.
I believe you are out of order and I will give you the warning now. Please refrain from insults in your remarks.
I'm really keen to see how this go out to the public dis, uh, this is um councillor Ekin's in closing that day. I'm really keen to see this go out on public display and see what our community has to say about it and get some firm direction. Councillor Ekin, this has occurred, we have some firm direction. Overwhelmingly, with a ten-fold response to what occurred in December, when you led the debate to remove the Dunoon Dam, the community has spoken and we must listen. Councillor put the I W C M on public exhibition in good faith. The community overwhelmingly responded in good faith and we must listen to that threat. We must listen to and treat them with, and not treat them with contempt. I don't use that word lightly as it means disregard for something that should be considered and the feeling that a person is worthless and beneath consideration.
Thank you, councillor Musto. Um, Speaker against the amendment, councillor Currie.
I think contempt is an interesting thing to bring into fact, into play here with regard to someone being worthless and beyond consideration when we're looking at indigenous heritage in this area. Because effectively, by proceed, by uh, aiming to proceed with the Dunoon Dam, that is exactly what we are doing to our first peoples. Um, I think it, oh, I've marked up, my apologies. I was eating chocolate. The thing is, we already have a dam and it does what it's supposed to do to the extent that a dam can. It's old tech and as councillor Cameron and both councillors Cadwallader referred to, thirty years ago in federal is thirty years ago, it's not now. What do we know about climate change? What do we know about extreme weather events thirty years ago? Um, well, I'd like to say rather impolitely, bugger all. So I think that uh, uh, by referring to the, what we do know is we've been looking at this dam situation over and over and over again as councillor Ekin's uh commented for quite some time. And the Dunoon Dam, through all the studies, not come to the top of the table as, as something that seemed to be worth pursuing for a lot of reasons. Um, I don't believe there's contempt for our community by not listening, by not listening to a petition. Uh, particularly if the term is perhaps not clear, uh, with regard to the complexities involved. Now, there's an example, I, I, I'm actually a keen believer in science. So if, if you said to people at the beginning of the Covid crisis, um, you've all got to stay indoors, you've got to wear masks and you can't touch each other and you can't go anywhere. If you had to just ask people what they thought about that, they would have said, you're out of your mind. Okay, so we've like, we've listened to the scientists, we did what was, we listened to the experts. We've got a person who is actually on the National Body for Water Preservation. Uh, let me remind you, the National Water Grid Advisory, um, advisory body uh, from the School of Environmental Engineering at the University of New South Wales. We have someone from the Institute of Sustainable Future saying to us, can't see dams, guys. They're not gonna um, stand you in good stead for the next several decades when, when uh, the climate change situation is going to get very pointy. So if we had been able to show all those petitioners that information, um, if we had been able to assuage people's fears about being short of water, it might have made a difference. I have to also say councillor Ekin's referred to the uh, demand management side of it. We haven't done anything like enough to educate our community, to really talk to our community about what they, how we are using water and how we, all of us, the constituent councils, Rouse, and both of us in our homes are actually using water better. It's ridiculous that I wash my clothes in rain, rainwater. It's ridiculous that it's going to cost me a hell of a lot more, more, a hell of a lot of money to put those um, fuel reticulations into my home. But I tried to do it and I've got to say, I haven't found Rouse very helpful. That Rouse, just as a small example, right? Rouse's rainwater tanks, you get a rebate. You know how much it costs to get a, if you um, uh, apply to get a rebate? First you have to put up the nine thousand, just for a nine thousand liter tank or more, several thousand dollars. I actually had it up here again and I just lost it a moment ago. But um, you get about a hun, a thousand dollars back. That's the biggest tank you can get. If you put in a two thousand to four and a half thousand liter, which might be a small house of, you get two hundred dollars back, but you have to pay the money and get it back. So one small thing that could have been done years ago, I tell you, I can buy a pair of shoes online, I can buy, you know, a new computer online and I can pay for it by the month of the zip pay. I can pay for it or pay after what it's called. Why can't we do something as simple as that as a start? And it's just a start, it's an example, it's no, not, uh, any suggestion to cure all, but it's like, really, are we actually really working hard to getting this done? Or are we just going to sit back and watch the Dunoon Dam roll out and we can all, and all do nothing? You know, we as a community have to acknowledge climate change. We have to acknowledge that putting our eggs in the basket of Dunoon, of a dam that will only be, uh, that is responsible, um, response to a rainwater situation is quite frankly insane. Now, there was talk of aquifers and what are we going to do, the comparing with fracking or whatever. I have to say that the Niri Bar and Tiagra Aquifers and other aquifers, the state government says you can't take more than eighty percent out of the, of the water out of that. So, and Rouse has said, we're only going to take ten percent. So I'm not saying it akin to fracking where chemicals are poured into the aquifer. It's looking, and aquifers of course recharge with rainwater, but it's not the same water that, of the rainwater that fell yesterday, it's the rainwater that fell months or years before. So we're not, if we take those systems and don't take it out of the dam, then when we do need the dam, we've got them, not the other way around.
Councillor Currie, can you point out things?
So I can't see that um, uh, why we would go, going back to the science. If we look at the science, we look at what's being told to us, which, which not thirty years ago, it's now. The picture has changed, um, the information has changed. By not going with the dam, we're actually on board bizarrely, we're on board with both state and federal um, directions on how to responsibly manage a resilient water supply. So um, I can't support councillor Cadwallader's uh, revised amendment here. I know she has the best intentions, but I, I think they are um, not supported by goods, uh, by good evidence and science.
Thank you, councillor Currie. Um, I'm aware that councillor Cook speaks, you'll close the debate, so I might just say a couple of words prior to that if you. Um, I don't, I don't want to speak too much in this debate. Um, I think I won't be supporting the amendment, um, I'll be clear about that. And there are many reasons why we have chosen a strategy that is not reliant on one single source and put all our eggs in one basket. That is not water security, that is not safety for our community. We have instead come up with a, with a proposal that uses multiple sources rolled out over time that is not only more flexible, more adaptable, um, it's also going to be significantly less costly to our community over the course of the next decade. Um. Listen, I think we should congratulate the, the people that ran the petition and their efforts to collect as many signatures as they did. Um, but we should be clear that the petition numbers reflect the level of effort required to collect the signatures, not necessarily some valid estimate of community sentiment. There is a much better gauge of actual community sentiment in the online survey. Far less biased, far more statistically valid, and that was much more equitable about what options people wanted. It was not an eighty-twenty, it was not a ninety-ten, it was closer to fifty-fifty across a range of issues. And that's a more reasonable reflection of the community sentiment than a petition that was gathered in supermarkets and, and other places where people were information poor. I think it's the, it's the kindest way I can say the process of that, of gathering those signatures. I have other views, but I will refrain from using those terms today. Um, fundamentally, the difference between this motion and the motion that, or this amendment and the motion that has been moved by councillor Cook is how we wish to respond to the issue of indigenous cultural heritage. The motion proposed by councillor Cook parks the dam proposal to enable consultation and talks to occur. It does not eliminate entirely the dam site, it in fact parks it until twenty twenty-five. This enables us to actually try and re-establish some kind of basic communication with the traditional custodians of this area and the broader Wijibul Wibul and Bundjaiun communities. This is necessary. There is clearly a significant degree of angst within the indigenous community about the indigenous heritage studies that have been done. There is disagreement about what should be done about that. Some would like other studies to be done to confirm or override the ones that, uh, the Owensworth report from two thousand and thirteen. Other people are arguing for no studies. We need to stop and consult. We need to, as an organisation and as a community, stop pretending that indigenous people don't exist and don't have rights and responsibilities in this community. This was decided by the High Court in the Marbo case in nineteen ninety-two, and that's what this goes back to. Will we continue to pretend, as the European colonizers did for a good two hundred years, that indigenous people weren't here? That sixty-five thousand years of history doesn't exist or that it's not valuable? It is intensely valuable to our community that we have a strong, respectful relationship with our traditional custodians, that we work with them. We cannot do that while the dam is in the I W C M and they feel like they have a gun held against their head. We need to park the proposal to enable those talks to continue in a reasonable basis. We can't just bully our way through and expect that we are going to maintain good relationships with indigenous people without ending up in court or serious litigation. That's the reality. Now, I have to give myself a wind-up signal. I think statements have been made of various types around this issue. Um, those that say we must listen to the eighty percent of respondents today were quite happy to ignore the eighty-five percent that spoke to us in December. To pretend that this is all about the numbers and the community is, is in my view misleading. There are a range of cultural, economic, environmental and water security issues we are trying to resolve. Resolving that in the forecourt of the Austinville Plaza Shopping Centre is not a good way forward with people that are poorly informed, misled by those collecting some petitions. I won't be supporting this motion and I will be asking councillors to think about our relationships with the Wijibul Wibul people, to think about how we repair those relationships and to think about how we work together in the longer term for the benefit of our community.
Chair, I'm a bit confused. You just said you won't be supporting this motion.
I won't be supporting the amendment, sorry.
Same motion, thank you.
Uh, councillor Cook, speak on the amendment?
Uh, thanks, Chair. Um. Just before you do, because I want to say something, but uh, councillor Cook speaks. I've just looked up what manipulate means and it, it means to use numbers in a skillful way for a particular purpose. So I don't believe I have said anything like, because I believe that for councillor Cook. Thank you.
All right, councillor Cook.
I, I disagree with you. This is an amendment, I believe, the foreshadowed motion, because it seeks to diametrically the opposite of what's involved to my motion, which was to uh, adopt the I W C M as presented and on public exhibition. Uh, recently, whereas councillor Cadwallader's motion seeks to wind back history back to June last year. And winding back that history in, as you know, part of this uh, motion or amendment, um, is ignoring the fact that we have debated this now for the fourth time. In December, we removed the dam from the I W C M strategy. In February, we re-debated it. We uh, debated a rescission motion, the rescission motion was lost. In March, we had another presentation, we approved it. We confirmed that this was the I W C M we were going to move forward, stressing on the various options of water efficiency, demand, uh, water demand, um, smart measuring, smart education, groundwater, sea salves, drought areas, and investigating uh, indirect and direct possible reuse. The whole pile of decentralized options that could be explored and brought online over thirty or forty years, rather than bring all our eggs in one basket in Dunoon. Um, councillor Musto reminded me that I said, yes, I listen to the community and I'll take, pay my attention to the submissions that come in. And I have looked at the submissions that have come in. However, I still have to weigh that, those submissions that called for us to scrap groundwater, scrap D cell, scrap potable water reuse entirely as options for permanent water supplies. Now that leaves us only with the dam as a possible option for, for uh, long-term water supply.
Is that correct? Not that, um.
No.
Correction.
If councillor Cook has the floor, unless you've got a point of order, it's councillor Cook's.
Well, that's misinformation. It has a permanent.
Um, if you have a point of order, I, I believe a number of things you've said are misinformation, but I have not interrupted your speech. So unless you've got a point of order, councillor Cook is to continue. Councillor Cook.
Um. We've listened today to people giving their best advice and their professional opinions on climate change, on uh, various options that we could use, rental, independent. I'm not going to repeat it, we've all talked about it, we've all listened to them and we've all agreed with many of their positions. So it comes down to, for me, to do we go and approve the completion of the detailed cultural heritage assessments and, and in consultation with the uh, native traditional custodians as per point six of councillor Cadwallader's motion? Or do we listen to the words of the Wijibul Wibul elders who have addressed us, both in December and today? Do we listen to N T S courts? Who have requested us not to make any decisions about the dam or the dam project around areas until we have had meaningful genuine consultations with the traditional owners included in Wijibul Wibul native title standards? We've got to completing demands upon our time. As councillor Currie said, we are not looking at a dead culture. We are not looking at the cave paintings in France or Spain. We're not looking at Pompeii, which is frozen in time. We have here in Australia a living culture with direct connection to the site down the Chang Gorge. We have ancestors there. They know who is, they remember their grandparents and their forebears who were buried down there. They have sacred sites down there. They have a living cultural connection. Something that none of us here in this room have. And yet we think we can override their wishes by saying, we're going to go and do a cultural heritage assessment as if they were a culture that had no impact or import into the um, into the conversation. I disagree with that. I think that is absolutely disrespectful. Um as I said, you know, my point, which in my motion was as uh has been said, it was to park the issue while we had meaningful conversations with the elders. We can uh, you know, if we can bring them on board and come to some consensus or some arrangement as to how we handle those aspects, then perhaps we could move forward in the future on this project. At the very moment, I don't see how we can. And as a consequence, I'm going to support the uh request of the elders and N T S court. I have to vote about this motion revoked, councillor Cadwalader's.
Thank you, councillor Cook.
I just had a mo- I had seen his moment again on your name.
Oh, that.
Sorry about that. You're right.
All right, we've had all our speakers, um the amendment to the motion. Uh this is the amendment moved by councillor Cadwalader and seconded councillor Humphries. Um everybody clear on what we're voting on? So I will put that amendment and ask for those in favour. Those against, declare that lost. All right, we are back to the original motion. Um we've had two speakers, four, two again, I have a foreshadowed amendment.
Now you'll have to choose if that's the amendment or a
Um that is a foreshadowed motion. That's not an amendment. Uh that's a, I'm ruling that that's a foreshadowed motion. Um that's not an amendment. Um we'll debate on the motion moved by councillor Cook. Uh we've had two speakers, four, two against, so it's now another speaker for the motion. Um and I don't think either councillor Cameron or Egan have spoken yet. So yeah, so um the speaker for the motion, this is for the motion made by councillor Cook. No.
No, I don't want to add to my comments, Chair. I I think my comments were crossbones.
Speaker against? No, no further speakers. All right, we have the motion in front of us. Um. Um I think councillors might be aware of that.
Yeah, it just came through.
Yeah, I um I appreciate that, but I don't think, I think we've got too far into the debate. Um thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um all right, there being no further.
I I I will. I just want to say that I can't support this. I support a lot of the investigations and develop the other options. Can't support it because of the public consultation. It's ignoring the public consultation. That's the only reason.
All right, I wasn't going to speak, but I now will. Um and I will say, this motion absolutely recognizes the petition. Um to say that this motion does not recognize that, I would believe is untrue, or we would not have point six. And we would certainly not have point six in a way that defers any sale of the land until after the next revision of the I W C M. That point is important because we need to recognize and the community needs to recognize that this is a living document. This doesn't get set once now and never changed. This will get reviewed in four years' time and it will get reviewed in four years after that. What is important between now and twenty twenty five is that we actually roll out some additional water infrastructure and we focus on that instead of what are we going to do in forty years' time? We urgently need to add additional water to the system. The best solution for that is the Austenville, um not the Austenville aquifer, it is the Marham Creek proposal. With boards that no longer are in the Austenville aquifer, that we remove the Ralphs boards from the Austenville aquifer, that we are in the Clarence Morton Basin. A huge, huge expanse of water sitting under our region, bigger than we are currently able to measure, but one in which we could meet our short-term needs for water. We cannot do that with a dam. If we were to do it at the petitioner's request and reject all other options, we wouldn't run a significant risk between twenty twenty four and twenty thirty, which is the earliest we could have a viable dam proposal. So to listen to that petition would be to put our community at extreme risk. It would also continue the pretense that the indigenous traditional custodians of this area don't matter, that we will study them as if they are animals and that we will not treat them as human beings worthy of being engaged and consulted in an area of deep cultural significance to them. I will not be party to that. I will not be party to running away from a mob, say from the shopping malls of our region, who's scared to to actually make the right decision? Because we have numbers of people who've signed a petition. It's a mob. Not much more than a mob, I should say.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, you can write it down, Robert.
I'm certainly going to, as are others.
I will not be a Quimby. I will not, I will not.
Uh to be.
You you had the hide to chastise me and and the way you're carrying on now as a chair is disgraceful.
Please tell me how I have insulted you.
I believe.
Please say you insulted me. I'm just saying the way.
Point of order, where's the insult?
Can we have one at a time? I didn't say you insulted me. Where are you assuming that for?
Well, I'm I'm asking what you're.
I said the way you're carrying on, calling community people mobs.
Calling Aboriginal people treated like animals. What sort of language is that from a chair?
I'm saying that refusing to engage with indigenous people, conducting a study into them without consult, without treating them as genuine human beings.
Well, if you had any.
Insulting to the indigenous people. There is no point of order, councillor Cadwalader. I will conclude my remarks.
I'll speak.
You haven't, um you cannot speak unless you are making a point of order, councillor Cadwalader. What is your point of order?
I am making a point of order. Um I want to say that the information you just relayed is incorrect. You said that this to reject all other options. The petition that was rolled out did not reject all other options. It rejected them as a permanent, permanent source, the three options as permanent, being the operative word. It never rejected them and left us with nowhere to go. And that is my point of order, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Cadwalader.
That is interesting information.
If you want a point of order, um councillor Cook had closed and you spoke for about a minute and a half, or ten minutes after her closing. Thank you.
Councillor Cook, have you finished? Councillor Cook was interrupted by councillor Cadwalader, councillor Musto. Thank you. I have asked councillor Cook if she would like to resume. Councillor Cook.
Final speaker?
Final speaker.
Thank you, Chair. We sit on this board of representatives of the people. We have a lot in common across the entire region. We have a lot of, lot of interests that are quite parochial and different from each other. There are interests in Richmond Valley that are totally different from the interest and priorities of Byron. But we sit here to try and do the best for our region as a collective of councillors. Most of the time, we, our councillors, are pretty much in agreement on the issues before us. We tend to work really well. We have some differences. But generally, we work in accord with each other. This issue of the dam, of the dam has divided for the last eight months. You know, we have some representatives from councillors opposed to the dam, others in support, and Bana appears split on the decision. Um despite the personal opinions of a number of councillors, local city council voted to support the current I W C M. I support that position. Um I guess some people will not accept the decision of this board and take this matter into council elections as all the issues. Um regardless of many merits of the arguments against the dam, I I think some people will believe if uh they change the constitution of the Ralphs Board after the election, they can change the direction of the future water strategy. I hope that doesn't happen, because personally, I believe that would lead to even greater division amongst our councils and our communities. And lengthy years of litigation, we shall hold up any hopes we have, but Ralph can meet water security into the coming years when we know the supply will not meet the demand. I believe we have the best strategy for the future in place in this I W C M that we endorsed and confirmed in March and went on public exhibition. It gives us a broad suite of options that are not dependent on rainfall and not dependent on surface storage. It encourages us to really work on water efficiency, smart water uses, demand management, conservation of rainfall and stormwater runoff from urban areas. It makes us think and take back to our general purpose councils about rethinking water conservation and water runoff from future developments, something vastly important, and it'll cost money. But I think that's something we really need to urge our general and purpose councils to undertake. I fear the messaging would get lost if people thought they had a fifty-gigaliter dam sitting up in the hills to rely on so they can waste as much as they want. We do know a number of people who still think they have entitlement to pour water down the driveways and wash their cars. We must listen to many water experts who have offered professional advice to us in recent months. They all agree we could do so much more and be pioneers in the diversity of water options. So let's not waste this opportunity to be leaders in this field, of course, the I W C M as it stands. And support Ralph as it showcases what can be done if we think outside the old traditional mindsets.
Thank you. All speakers, I'll now put that motion, the motion moved by councillor Cook, seconded by councillor Corey. It's on the board. Can I ask for all those in favour? That's five. Those opposed? Three. The motion is carried. All right, we will now move on to item two of five. Foreshadowed motion, I believe, is um given we just adopted the entire I W C M, I think that's inconsistent with the motion that we've just passed. Um.
Foreshadowed motion don't precede the motion.
I think that would be a negation of the motion that we've just adopted.
We've got a mini brush.
Have you got the difference? It wasn't going to be a Quimby. Um all right, moving on to item two.
I have a motion here. What difference does this one? I didn't draw you, man. Have they copied that one?
Yes.
Are you moving, you're moving this? Get fired.
You're moving your own.
Thank you.
Yes, all of that, thank you.
Much further.
Now do we have a second to count, councillor Cadwalader's motion?
I think that's a clarify. It doesn't have point.
So essentially, the, my understanding is the motion deletes in the, from the staff recommendation one B. Would that be a correct formation?
Yeah.
Will you go straight from acquire the treatment plant and then second option is wood burn? You seem to rule out the previous other seconds. All right, I'm just trying to clarify the motion. If I don't hear from anybody seconding the motion, I will regard it as lapsed and I will call for removal for the original staff recommendation.
Well, miss the original.
As I've got no second, I will call. I have called repeatedly called for second in the last several minutes.
I will then, thank you. I was reading it most clearly.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Cadwalader.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um so basically what this does, this goes, this this actually goes back to um this water plant where it says that uh the first option um is that we um we use groundwater. And that is what Marham Creek Water Treatment Plant is. Um it it's actually, sorry, it's surface water, not groundwater. And takes out going into the aquifers at Austenville, which as we know, uh the majority of responses in the submission, but it does use the surface water. And we know that that surface water is very much underutilized. I think it's uh that surface water is is only used at thirty-five percent, thirty-five percent. Um I might need um verification of that, but I believe it's about thirty-five percent.
No, I believe it's a hundred and eighty megaliters out of a two hundred megaliter licence.
So.
Which would be ninety percent of its allocation.
So we know that it's underutilized and there's much more capacity for it to be used to service a wider area. Michael, could you just turn that for me through the chair?
Right, right, the chair. Uh so the Marham Creek Water Treatment Plant has a license limit of two hundred milliliters currently. That license limit can be applied for an increase. Uh the current daily use is about fifty, five hundred and fifty kilos per day, uh with modifications to a plant and output of around three megaliters if possible. Uh so there is a current impediment related to a license limit and there's a current impediment into uh it's actually both things, it's amount of length and big dress.
Right, but it's being underutilized. Um the L N A council is underutilizing the amount of water that comes through the unconfirmed.
Oh, yes, there's an opportunity to increase the output of that plant because it's underused for a few hours a day. Uh increasing that output and to find other areas could use the existing surface water system for a greater effect.
Thank you, Michael. And that's the point I make. So yes, I do support that. Uh so so basically, I do not support uh going into the aquifers because that is what we heard in the um submission, very loud and clear that um we don't support going into the aquifers. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell, councillors.
That's a question, but. Yep, um there's a bit missing from the first, from point one A, councillor Cadwalader. It talks about the ancillary infrastructure, so you're saying that's not part of your preferred option.
Correct.
Okay, can you, why is that?
Well, because that would be in relation to uh aquifer water.
Oh, oh, okay, is that right? Yeah, I complicated that.
That's a good question.
Could I just have some clarification on my question, please? So could I have some clarification, please, about the ancillary infrastructure and assets? What?
So the way this is written at the moment is to use Marham Creek Water Treatment Plant as a surface water system only, so using its current um with, where there's a surface water system only. That's what, uh that's how I read uh one A and councillor Cadwalader can correct me on.
No, that's absolutely right. So what's the mission of the ancillary infrastructure mean?
So as part of the, uh through the chair, as part of the strategy, um Marham Creek has the two parts. So the initial part is to use the surface water, but the longer term was to utilize groundwater to supplement the surface water so to meet the needs um over the life of that asset.
So that means the ancillary infrastructure and assets are to do with Austenville water.
The current strategy, correct, that that the so man is, the the strategy in the I W C M is utilizing both surface water and groundwater.
Okay, so that relates to that. Thank you. Clarifying.
So is that the main difference in the two? We don't use the the boards.
Entirely.
So through the the chair, there's two um items here. One is based on what's written in front of us. One is based on what's written in front of us, is it Marham Creek with the surface water only?
Yes.
Um, there was in the staff recommendation a part B, which is to do its own groundwater only source before using to woodburn. They are the two key differences between councillor Cadwalader's, um, motion versus staff recommendation.
If this recommendation that we have from councillor Cadwalader goes ahead, how is that going to affect our future water supply? I need to find out.
Michael would be in the best position.
Uh, so the Marham Creek facility on its own has provided only a increase in security in the view of about four hundred and seventeen, uh, megaliters of additional pure yield. Uh, they even contingent on a no transfer rule from the raw water source, I mean, excluding the license limit and being able to get four hundred and seventeen as a license limit in this direction. But that's what the security of that particular option would provide.
Sorry, four hundred and seventeen what?
Uh, megaliters.
Megaliters.
And do we, uh, the current water, future water strategy is estimate one point two gigaliters from that sys- is, is relying on one point two gigaliters from that system in twenty twenty-four?
Uh, so the long-term demand from the areas that we wish to supply is in the vicinity of one thousand two hundred and fifty megaliters per annum. Uh, the system that we are promoting, the staff recommendation, will provide a different security of about one thousand five hundred, sorry, one thousand and fifty megaliters per annum.
But if we were to, I think the question from councillor Musto and certainly myself is if we were to rely just on the surface water. What would be our deficit then?
Roughly six hundred.
Roughly six hundred, we would be six hundred megaliters short in six hundred.
So, so there's only forty standard blocks required as part of the strategy.
Then the woodburn comes into play. So we're still going to use groundwater from somewhere.
Thank you, ma'am. Yep, uh, in B, one B. So second preferred option is to develop a groundwater treatment plant for Ralph's waters located at Woodburn.
Hmm.
Um, question if I may, with the chair?
Question to a staff member, yes?
Uh, yeah, probably to Michael, but perhaps to you, Philip. Um, so if we're looking that this would give us forty percent of what this requires, um, and then we consider Ralph, the Ralph, sorry, the Ralph was at Woodburn. How much then was, does that add to that? And if you consider that this is the first preferred option, the second preferred option, so it's not, it's an either or, not an and. So currently in this motion, uh, so I'm just wondering, can we get some more information about clarifying the amounts that we're looking at here, please?
And while you're doing that, you might want to say that, or let us know in the same answer. The woodburn, um, it's a long way from Marham Creek. I'd have a treatment plant, where do we get that tip water to, what area of the, of our distribution area, please?
So there's two elements here. Um, this business pa- this report is only associated with stage one of the future water strategy. So stage one is looking at using Marham Creek. The, the first, uh, is obviously Marham Creek. In the event that Marham Creek is not possible, that's what these additional, so their contingency options associated with stage one. However, in the event that this, um, is successful and adopted, what it would do would, um, drive the delivery of stage two earlier, which is Tiagra. So tha- that's the way to look at it. So there's a couple of things here that have, uh, one, this report is only looking at stage one. But because we're going to, if, um, if we're only using the surface water only, we don't get the full amount that that's required. That's currently planned within the strategy, so it would bring forward stage two. Um, a- as I said, the, the way the strategy is written at the moment is Woodburn plays a drought contingency component across stage one and stage two. So what we're saying here is that in the event that, we know that, um, Marham Creek and Woodburn are the two quickest systems to be able to establish to meet the, the demand by twenty twenty-four. Um, and that's why we've got a contingency. So in the event that we're unsuccessful in terms of that transfer from Ballina, what's our next step? Which would be to go alone, uh, uh, its own groundwater system. The negative of that is that it doesn't get the supplement of the surface water system that Marham Creek has. But it is still a better overall proposal compared to the next best, which is the third prefer- preferred, which is Woodburn. But what councillors also need to, to realize is if you go through that hierarchy for, uh, stage one and end up at Woodburn. We then have, uh, utilized our drought contingency. So we would still have to do some work at Austenville to ensure that our current boards are at a drought. So basically we'll flip it around and where we've got, um, Austenville as a, the primary source, it would then become the drought contingency source. Because we already own groundwater licenses at those sites that within Ralph. So that's not what's up for debate. The, the debate is the transfer of the other half of the equation, which is the water treatment plant as well as the groundwater, um, licenses that Ballina Council has.
Thank you. Question, Chair?
All right, uh, um, we've had one speaker for, the mover, speaker against?
Question.
Questions?
We just passed the I W C M, which has a series of strategies, which do include as their preferred strategy, Marham Creek, Austenville groundwater before Woodburn. Does this motion by eliminating Austenville actually try to undermine the previous decision?
Is it inconsistent?
Which had Austenville as part of an, as one of the integral stages of the I W C M.
Follow up on that, join it together. The question, why is it in the agenda as an item, second item?
Why?
It's going to.
Sorry, I missed that, Rob.
Well, if, if it would conflict that, why is it in the agenda after we've just adopted that? That's what I think we need to find out.
So I think there's two issues here through the chair that we're talking about. The, the second report is complimentary to the first. The, what's being discussed at the moment is if this amendment that's been proposed by councillor Cadwater is successful, would it then be contrary to what the original report was? So, um, I would suggest no, what it does do, because it still allows the stages, stage one, stage two. What it does do is significantly reduce the time before we go from stage one to stage two. It doesn't change the order of the stages. We still go from Marham or Marham's equivalent to Tiagra. But what it does do is we don't get that additional benefit of the groundwater, as Michael was, um, stating before, which is sixty percent. So fundamentally, we still have the assets, it's still staged, but we only get forty percent of the, the total that was calculated as part of the strategy.
So how soon would we, if this is adopted and Marham boards come out, how soon would we be going to Tiagra? Because you said that's going to shorten the time, so how, how soon would that occur?
I'd have to refer that.
Without a moment, I'd suggest it would be very shortly after twenty twenty-four. That would be wanting to have that system after visiting water to ensure that we have our long-term reliability.
But we'd be in Tiagra trying to produce water in twenty twenty-four.
Uh, at the moment, you can be paid in that Tiagra is not a fire till about twenty thirty. Uh, if we had sixty percent of the ten years, we're probably about twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. In around that vicinity would be the point at which we'd want to make Tiagra operation.
Operator.
Um, is this a question or?
Yes, a question, mover. Councillor Cadwalader, in that scenario, I'm wondering why you're making a distinction between one aquifer over another? Because from what I'm hearing from staff is that if we don't, if we don't use the underground, the groundwater aspect and not the surface water at Marham Creek, then we have to go to Tiagra. So, um, are you there preferring it directly away from Tiagra ahead of preferring it, preferring it from Austenville? Is that your intent?
I'm listening to what the community has said. And in the first exhibition, you had this, the head of submissions, you said that they did not want the aquifer touched. I'm listening to what the community said, and again, exhibition, exhibition, they don't want the aquifer touched. Okay.
Um, councillors, we're moving into other questions. I'm, I'm actually going to have to ask someone to, to speak against the motion because this, this is, this is not how we operate. Um, so we've got speakers for, speakers against, who would like, we've had the speaker for, is there someone to speak against?
I'd like to move the recommendation as printed.
That's what my question would have been, and I'll second it.
But sorry?
Move the recommendation as printed in the business paper.
As an amendment, as an amendment.
I'll second.
Um, I think I, we've only had one speaker for, mover.
Are you waiting for a second?
Is that last time we had an?
Yeah, yeah. So we have to provide opportunity before we accept the amendment?
No, it's last time.
No, it can be done straight away. All right, this is an amendment moved by councillor Dickens and seconded by councillor Cameron. To, um, an amendment for the motion as printed in the agenda. All right, that's, that amendment is now live, councillor Dickens.
Oh, well, I just briefly, it's part of the strategy that we've been working on for, um, some time. And while I do understand there are some concerns about, uh, groundwater and that I, using groundwater and do admit it is for flushing toilets and washing clothes. That is what this water is for. Um, and we really do need to talk with our community about how we use that water. And I wish every house had a rainwater tank that they use for washing their clothes and flushing their toilets. Um, still, this is part of the strategy and I understand that a lot of the concerns that were raised by farmers in, on the Austenville plateau were addressed by the Clarence Morton aquifer being specified in this.
Thank you, councillor. Uh, speaker for, um, a speaker against the amendment? Uh, another speaker for the amendment, councillor Cook. Oh, sorry, councillor Cameron, sorry. I'm looking at you and then I'm reading Cook on the piece of paper in front of me, my apologies.
I'm still recovering from a cough moment.
Um, thank you, Chair, and thank you, councillors. Look, I just think we've had, uh, I think it's been clarified enough in the last few minutes. Um, we've adopted a strategy that this is part of. And at the first step, we tend to be rewinding our options again. We seem to be narrowing all the options, all the diversification, all the good things that we've been talking about, now want to narrow it down. Uh, I note in the report that, you know, and I recall from earlier discussions, that one of the key things about the Marham Creek and Austenville, uh, uh, groundwater was their proximity. So that ability to move the water from Austenville to a treatment plant is going to be a lot more efficient, uh, if it happens there. And I just, I, I'm struggling to see why we would actually, um, put more pressure on everyone and reduce our options and reduce our flexibility if we were to go with the, the motion. Um, I don't see much more that needs to be said on that, I just hope that everyone can support it, thank you.
All right, a speaker against the amendment? Another speaker for the amendment?
Yeah, I will. Look, I'm in a bit of a, uh, a situation where I, I second the original, um, motion, that that was to get it out in the, um, in the debate. Um, I needed some advice from the staff, that's why I done that, to find out. But now I've heard that advice, I believe, um, we need to have a short-term water supply, um, that is, um, critical. The other thing that worries me, um, is if we don't attempt to get that groundwater at Marham Creek, um, and we go to Woodburn, that really affects our drought contingency plan. And we really need that, so, um, I think it, um, is just, I'd like to always get the staff's advice and to me, it's very sound advice.
Any other, uh, you were close, right? Any other speakers before then? Councillor Humphrey?
Uh, look, I, I have the same, um, thoughts along, uh, the ones of councillor Musto with Woodburn. Drought emergency water has always been a huge concern of mine, but I absolutely understand where councillor Cadwalader is coming from because the written support. Uh, the written support in the public submission has six hundred and thirty-three response supporting sustainable groundwater harvesting, but not in Austenville. So I understand where you're coming from and I, but I can't support you.
Um, any other speakers? Just very briefly, because as a Ballina councillor, this is part of my patch. Um, we need to recognize that there are already existing boards into the Austenville aquifer that are used to supply public water. In fact, one point two gigaliters of licenses owned collectively by Ralph and Ballina. They are currently in the shallow aquifer, or at least one of them is, and has an ongoing impact on farmers whenever it is used. The point of this, of the proposal for Marham Creek is to sink those bores hundreds of meters deeper so that they do not compete with agriculture. And in fact, councillor Cadwalader's proposal would continue to see adverse im- impacts on agriculture by not dealing with the existing bores. It is not necessary to rule out all groundwater when you are concerned about some aspects of it. I am concerned about aspects of the impact on terrestrial ecosystems, of impacts on agriculture. But leaving our bores in the shallow Austenville aquifers is the worst outcome. The best outcome is that we sink those bores past the Austenville aquifer into the Clarence Morton basin. That is the best outcome for farmers on the plateau. Because it actually means that we are putting water back into the gardens, back onto the surface of Austenville. That has not come out of those immediate aquifers within the basalt. This would be, in my view, councillor Cadwalader, your motion would be a backward step for people on the plateau. It should not be supported by this council. We should not change tack. We should remember that we adopted groundwater as our strategy in two thousand and fourteen. We've been working on this strategy since then and to suddenly change from that. The dam was never adopted in two thousand and fourteen. The dam was never adopted in two thousand and seven. The dam was not adopted in nineteen ninety-five. What has been our preferred strategy is groundwater. We've now, via our earlier motion, broadened that to other sources, other rainfall independent sources. But we must develop some groundwater in the short term to meet the needs of the population. To do otherwise, put our community at risk, does not promote water security, does not promote responsible use. So I will definitely not be supporting this motion and I urge couns- urge councillors to support the amendment and to oppose the original motion.
Um, councillor Cadwalader to close?
Thank you, Chair. Well, 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 we should not change tack and suddenly change the match. That's almost laughable because that's exactly what happened back in December twenty twenty. Five of you changed tack and, and axed the down dam out of the all options on the table strategy. Um, no, that doesn't sit well with me.
Was never an adopted strategy, councillor.
Point of order, Chair, I'm speaking, please. Um, we must have some groundwater. Well, because this is all changed now, because the strategy is all, you know, everything changed back in December. Um, and we don't have all options on the table now for a future water strategy, which is why we have to go into the aquifer. Uh, try and tell, tell the, the people on the plateau that it doesn't matter, that, uh, give them the confidence. They're still, they're still thinking about when Ralph started pumping from their bores in our dry spell that we had. Uh, and they had to buy water in. We know that they're affected in a five-kilometer radius and you say, uh, yes, I know that, um, um, local government hold twenty percent of the licenses on the plateau. I do know that.
What percentage was that?
Twenty percent.
We own one out of nine gigaliters of licenses, I believe.
It's between ten and.
I'll get that, that's the figure I was given. Twenty percent of licenses on the plateau.
Uh, just a question to the Chair. Uh, it's around the fifteen, fourteen, fifteen. So there's roughly, uh, just over nine thousand gigaliters, or nine thousand megaliters of licenses in the plateau. And there's one thousand two hundred and fifty or thirty, uh, licenses held for the purposes of groundwater supply, um, based on those numbers, it's around fourteen percent.
Hmm, good. Thanks very much, Michael. Thanks very much, Michael. Um, so, so it's not, what I'm saying here is, I'm listening to the community, I'm like you, councillor Williams, I am listening to their concerns, uh, as they have clearly stated, they're not comfortable with the act that's been funded up there on the plateau, they're not comfortable with that. So you have to listen to that. I'm not going to sit here and vote for something. Um, mind you, this still has to go through Ballina Council yet, and I'm just not sure how that's going to go either. Uh, so what I'm saying here, here is, here is an opportunity to use the, use the, the surface water and use the, um, and then go to Woodburn and, uh, Tiagra. And we've got Byron councillors here, not too concerned about that, um, using that at, at Tiagra, and that's the decision for them, representing their community, but I'm not comfortable with going into the aquifers, be it the Clarence Morton Basin or not. We know that that water is, um, is really, um, not great. The quality of that water is not good, and it's going to take millions of dollars to try and clean that water at that lower aquifer. Hugely expensive once again to use that water, uh, we know that, we've already been advised that.
Um, point of order, councillor, uh, we've not been advised that, we've been advised that water testing, further water testing needs to be done to rule that out. We haven't, there are no reports of adverse water findings so far.
That clarified.
That's a clarify.
That is, that is what I've been told.
On that misleading.
Uh, so, sorry, I did you, this is a bit of that, that question, uh, so just for one clarification, so in our program that, that gives you points and points, uh, we did preferate, uh, the Austinville aquifer and went into the Clarence Morton Basin, uh, whilst it's an imperfect water program, because you are trying to screen as you go, and there is leakage between those two aquifers, the water quality results didn't indicate to us that there was an adverse finding to groundwater supply, and that there is a viable theme in the Clarence Morton Basin. Uh, does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
And if the quality of the water wasn't actually tested?
Uh, so the, the, we began, we ran, um, some analytical tests, uh, not the fourth week, but what we're proposing to do in future, but some of the screen indicators to us near our susceptibility of groundwater, like indicators that were reliable for, so the limit being one of the, um, preferred methods of determining freshness of water, indicated that it was the, of acceptable standard that would not require event treatment or, uh, sanding to bring it to an acceptable aesthetic taste level.
Okay, thanks, Michael. Okay, I can't support, uh, I can't support that, but I do know it's going down, but, um, thank everybody, um, for listening to the debate and listening to the concerns which I think are real, and I believe I've represented my community, uh, concerns on this.
So that concludes the debate. Um, the amendment is the staff recommendation, so we put that first, that's moved by councillor Dickens. Um, so, um, I'll ask for those in favor of the amendment. Uh, seven, those opposed to the amendment, councillor Cadwalader. Uh, the amendment becomes the motion, I'll now put that, all those in favor of the motion, that's seven, all those opposed, that's councillor Cadwalader, the item dealt with. Uh, there are no other items on the agenda at possibly three ten, somewhere around there, close the meeting.
Oh, thank you.